Special meeting on Tuesday, May 31st, for water for Colorado.
Councilmember Prazarelli.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy is not going to be speaking. Councilmember Longo.
Here.
Latari.
Here.
Councilmember Holdup is not being attended. Second, the board will announce your name. Mayor Campbell.
Here. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a public hearing in the second and final reading?
For this number one, the public hearing and affordable housing ordinance will be attached to my fellow's.
I move to...
Do you have that there?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. We have a public hearing for Colorado.
Councilmember Prazarelli.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes. You can speak on this ordinance now, so let's... refrain from any other business until we go into public participation. We speak on the ordinance now.
Mr. Mayor, we understand from coming to meetings and them being asked to leave because all the discussion with Darlene Green regarding affordable housing was held in private. The public has been totally in the dark. We have no idea what's going on, till this ordinance did. Now, how can we speak on something we know nothing about?
Mayor, if I may, maybe an explanatory statement is required to inform the public. As everyone is aware, last March, March of 2015, the Supreme Court of this state, because the council on affordable housing was more or less at a logger jam and unable to act on regulations, was petitioned and entered an order requiring towns to do certain things. The first thing that they said is that the courts themselves were going to supervise what was formerly the council on affordable housing obligations and determine which ones would be acted upon or imposed upon by the various municipalities. All of the municipalities were required, all the municipalities that didn't have a COA ordinance in place, which Belville did not, were required to file a declaratory judgment action in a timely fashion. I believe it was sometime around the middle of July 2015. We did that. Subsequently, as part of that order, all of the townships that were now under the court's jurisdiction were required to submit three things. A development fee ordinance, spending plan, and an affordable housing plan. Belville did this in or about December of 2015. They're actually, while related, they are three separate components of the township's responsibility. The court has been supervising the progress of what each town is submitting to the court. The documents that were submitted, they're public documents, and they were submitted as public documents, and I'm sure that you have a copy of them. But the court has been acting on these on a piece-by-piece basis. The most important thing, and the reason for this special meeting, is the development fee ordinance. Now, what that ordinance does, as separate and apart from the other two components, what that ordinance does, it establishes the right of a township to impose fees on developers who are building new structures within the town, whether it be housing or commercial. A township, there are exemptions to this, however. For example, let's just say a project has already obtained preliminary site plan approval or final site plan approval. They will not be subject to these fees. Now, the fees will be collected by the town. There will be a trust account established. The chief financial officer will establish that trust account. And then, as a second part, Belville will have to submit, which we already have in draft, a proposed spending plan. So, what happened was, with regard to Belville's plan, Belville's plan was reviewed, by Belville's plan, I mean the development fee ordinance, was reviewed, excuse me, by a special master. There's a number of special masters found to be compliant, and it was heard before Judge Gardner on May 13th, 2016, and he entered the order permitting this ordinance and approving this ordinance. The reason for this special meeting is by the time we got the order, it could not be put on the agenda for, it could not be published in time to be on the agenda for the last meeting. In an abundance of prudence, therefore, and without waiting for the next meeting, which I think is June 14th, the governing body, on my recommendation, had a special meeting so that the public could be heard on it, speak on it, and the governing body will then vote on it. And what will happen is that it'll be published and it'll become one of Belville's ordinances. The draft housing plan nor the spending plan are a part of this. They are still subject to court approval with regard to the housing plan. As I've indicated, that's a draft plan. As you're probably aware, once there's a reorganization on July 1st, any ordinances on the table, they go away. Any ordinances that haven't been acted on, they go away and have to be started. So, the governing body, very, very prudently, decided on my recommendation to have this meeting tonight to obviate the necessity, or the possibility, I should say, of this particular development fee ordinance being pushed off again for another several months. So, this was... That in a nutshell is why we're here tonight.
Well, it's a, we have some of the documents, we've got to a third party. But on May 13th, I was in court, and that court hearing that Mr. Murphy argued lasted about 45 to 60 seconds. And once again, the judge did not use the microphone. Anyone sitting in the audience wouldn't know. Mr. Murphy went up, said a few words, and the judge nodded, said, "Okay, this and that," and the public didn't know what was going on.
Well, see, Mr. Frantantoni, that's not exactly correct, and let me jump in there for a second. This motion was made in March of 2016, on notice to approximately 25 or 30 people. These motion papers were submitted as they were required to be, not only to the special master, but to virtually everyone that Belville felt in the township who had land that might be developed of. But it was also, interestingly, served on the Fair Share Housing Center, as well as a number of other governmental individuals, the Department of Environmental Protection, and the Department of Community Affairs. Now, of all of these people to whom this notice was provided, none of them opposed it. Not one opposed it. And the reason they didn't oppose it is because they know it was a proper, properly drafted ordinance. So, that's the reason. Now, you were in court, I don't recall you saying anything or asking to be heard at that time, but, you know, it was... You hadn't submitted any papers.
45 seconds. The judge got up and walked out. You then had a discussion with Mr. Pathan, I don't know what he was doing there, and then it went out, and you talked with the court clerk and all. It wasn't a minute, Tom.
Well, it wasn't a long hearing, but we were sitting there for quite some time, and it was a scheduled hearing. As a matter of fact, the judge had scheduled it for, I believe, 11 o'clock in the morning, and then asked that I notify everybody else, excuse me, everyone, that the hearing time was moved up, I think, to 9:45. I'm not positive. So, the hearing was, there was no question about the legality of the hearing, the notice, or the ordinance, in my view.
The Murphy stated...
First of all, now, let me continue. This ordinance was introduced in April?
March.
In April?
March 22nd.
March 22nd. So, the public has had notice of this ordinance since March 22nd, and now you're here to talk about it, so...
Well, that's a point, and I'm glad you also stated that 25 to 30 parties, I believe interested parties, were made aware of this, including the Fair Share Housing Center.
Correct.
The question is, the pub, and they've been notified, we understand, throughout the year as those meetings with Darlene Green was taking place. But, and they were called interested parties. I think the public and the 35,000 people of Belville are interested party, and we weren't privy to any of this information.
Well, that's not true, Mr. Frantantoni. This ordinance, I think you just heard, was introduced in March, on March 22nd?
Yes, of this year.
And now it's being heard tonight. It's just like any other ordinance.
Right, but we haven't gotten the specifics of it.
The specifics are set forth in the ordinance.
And it troubles them. The specific trouble, the development fees, you listed some of them. A resident has a one-family house and wants to convert it to a two-family house, he's going to be subject to development fees also. Is that not correct?
Well, it all depends. For example, I'll give you the exemptions. Owner-occupied residential structures demolished and replaced as a result of fire, flood, or disaster shall be exempt. Development fees shall be imposed and collected when an existing structure is demolished and replaced. Additions to existing homes and improvements such as decks and patios are exempt.
Well, excuse me, I mean, go back to the previous one there. If my one or one of my two family houses is demolished, is damaged, are subject to a development?
If there is something that is going to be built, it's going to be assessed.
And that, remember, the public have a problem with it. But beyond that, we're concerned about additional housing in the magnitude as proposed in that draft report or report, whatever you want to call it, where it called for 2,493 units of new housing. And that's in your report on page 20 of that.
That's a different, that's not in this ordinance. That's not what's up for discussion tonight.
You thought, the development fee ordinance.
The ordinance.
Right. So, the question, I don't even know what, if we don't have an obligation, and go back to the letter from the Fair Share Housing Center, which by the way, is a group of lawyers who form, I don't believe it's a government entity, like Mr. Murphy stated. It's a group of lawyers who formed this group to represent developers, to get them to build a corporate, unco, affordable housing while they make millions of dollars. So, I don't believe they're a government entity, and throughout their letter, they said there could be no obligation, anything. But the last paragraph, they want to be designated as an interested party to help to go through it. So, they're not a government entity, and I just want to get that on the record. And these developers buy into that, or fund this organization for the purpose, and again, I'm going to say this, to create this situation, if you have this redevelopment ordinance, I mean, this affordable housing ordinance, where you're going to collect fees, and it specifies how the fees can be used for developers to help them with building affordable housing, here's the fear we have, and I got a bunch of newspaper articles, because it's happening in every other town. In Ho-Ho-Kiss, One-A-Q, all over. Then the builder comes in and says, "I want to build 200 units. I'm going to give you 20 percent, I'll give you 40." You say, "We don't want 200 units." "Oh, excuse me, you've got to develop an affordable housing ordinance." And, and you, I hope you know it, that's what's called the builder's remedy. I think what we're setting up here is a nice bunch of seeds that'll grow into the ability for these builders to come in with a builder's remedy.
I disagree with you, because I've been mandated by the courts to do it.
Well, I don't know if we're mandated, because if you look at some of this literature, it's all it, hands and up. And it refers, like Mr. Murphy said, to the county doing it on a regional basis, but they haven't done anything yet. It's in your own documents, I wish you would read, you know. I had the time, I can go, I got everything highlighted on there.
Well, we're not going to talk about the documents.
But, well, again, it's in your ordinance, and that's why I fear by creating this here, we're setting up the scenario where we have a builder's remedy. And we don't need any more housing, and I wish you'd address the, we keep hearing denials, but it's in your documents about the 2,000 units on the Pickle Side property. Then the 154 of the age-restricted housing on Mills Street, but according to the documents, am I correct? Every one of those 154 units, 80-something now and 60-something in a year or two, are all affordable housing? Is that correct, as stated in your report?
Well, first of all, are we talking about the Mills Street project?
Did you strip that out?
That, the development fees would not apply there. They already have their preliminary and final site plan approval.
I didn't ask about development fees. According to your report, it said that...
We get a credit for some of them.
In 2016, 86 units are going to be done, and 2018, 68, for total of 154. Now, the next paragraph of the 2,493 anticipated units, 154 will be affordable. And then, the graph on the, the chart shows Mills Street, 154. So, is this report correct? All those 154 are going to be affordable housing units?
Well, that's in the draft report. We are, our expert, who unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight, there are certain credits that you get against your affordable housing obligation, and we believe that we're going to get a substantial number of credits for that particular development. See, you're focusing on, and I know you would like the conversation to stay on the 2,500-unit draft plan, but really, you know, contained within that plan, I've yet to hear someone from the audience point to page 25 of that draft plan, where it is anticipated that Belville's obligation will be to rehabilitate roughly between 110 and 760 units. It is not going to require Belville to build new housing. But the, this development fee ordinance, let's just say, for example, you're a proponent of responsible commercial development, I'm sure. There are developments that may be coming to fruition in the relatively near future that will generate maybe $2 million in fees towards these rehabilitation obligations. So, I don't think this governing body wants to take the chance not to enact this ordinance because once a developer gets preliminary site plan approval, they will not have to pay the fees, and Belville will be left holding the bag. This doesn't require Belville, this part of the COA plan does not require Belville to do anything. It establishes a mechanism to assess fees. Very simple, that's all it is.
Well, the thing is, like you're saying, $2 million is the development of fees.
In COA fees, in the trust fund fees. In fees that will be placed with the CFO, and the next thing that this governing body is going to roll out, I believe, in July or August or September, is going to be a spending plan. Now, we can't predict how the spending plan is going to go, but we need to collect the monies and put them in, and have them in the trust fund.
Well, this development, they're talking, they're generating $2 million in fees, and in the ordinance, I think, the fees go from 1.5% to something like 3%.
Well, no, they go up to 6%, I think, in certain instances.
Anyway, so you're talking...
We're talking about non-residential. It'll go 2.5, 2.5%, but there is a 6% provision fee here.
Well, anyway, that's a lot of developments, anywhere from 50 to 100 million dollars of development. And those percentages raise, raise that kind of money. But, well...
But the point of the matter, it's not paid by the taxpayers, paid by the developers.
It's always, the bottom line, it's always the bottom-line consumer who pays everything. The developer pays, writes a check, same way, I'm a landlord, I write the check for taxes, but I don't pay them, the tenant pays them. But the bottom line is here, we have, that's really a fear of this 2,500 residential units. Here's article, just in this past weekend, Richfield, two warehouses that go up in December with industrial space in high demand.
Just the ordinance, okay?
No, well, this is in relation to the ordinance. This is what's going on, we're very fearful this ordinance will create residential development, Mr. Mayor, and I hope...
Not necessarily.
I hope you're not, people are aware that we're overdeveloped. I mean, we're packed in 18,000 per square mile like ants in an anthill. We don't need anymore, and you as a police officer know what happens when you get that kind of density. We're packed in, and this fee ordinance is just setting, it's a time bomb, and it's allowing these developers, "Oh, good, I'll pay the fees. You're going to let me build 2,000 units?" Yeah, I'll give you 20%.
I also know what happens to a town if you don't encourage development.
Well, I'll tell you what happened to it.
Well, Mayor, hold on, there's two, let me go back to where we were before on opposed fees. If there's going to be an increase in residential density, then the developer will be, maybe, may be required to pay a development fee of 6% for each additional unit above the density.
Again, that's a perfect, that's what I'm talking about, because the developer is not going to pay that 6%. The cost of his project is going to go 6%, and the renters or buyers are going to pay that 6%. But you asked a question, I'll answer you.
No, I don't, you don't have to answer me.
No, I have to answer you.
No, you don't have to answer me.
Because a town, a town that has no development, I'll give you two of them. I came and developed a former house in 1960.
I took on the ordinance, please. Just the ordinance.
I'll answer you.
I don't want to know when you, when you were counseling, and I don't know what I want to know.
No, I'm talking about...
I want to know about the ordinance.
I'm talking about the taxpayer.
Tell the week.
In my current...
Talk about the ordinance. You could talk about a taxpayer in a public forum.
Yes.
Yes.
Talking about the ordinance.
That's all I want you to talk about.
Which is setting the stage for a developer to come in. And, and again, according, even the Fair Share Housing letter to the judge says, "Belville doesn't have any obligation." I don't know where we're getting this, that we have to have an obligation. In fact, one of the graphs shows the last 00. We have no affordable housing obligation. And did anybody count, there's a lot, who counted all these affordable, I'll give you one example. Grogan, built 26, supposedly senior conversion. In their ordinance, as told to me by the chairman of the zoning board just last week, five of those units were a condition of affordable housing. Is anybody checking on that? Yeah, has anybody counted those five units, and is he actually using them as affordable housing units? It's in the zoning board approval when they got them.
Mayor, I think we're getting a little far afield of this ordinance. This is a relatively simple thing. The Supreme Court of this state requires it. We have a Superior Court judge order approving this component of Belville's Council on Affordable Housing Plan. This is, these fees, if a developer comes in and develops, they have to pay the fees pursuant to law. That's all there is to it. I think what the, if what you're suggesting is Belville has no obligation to build?
No, no, no obligation to create any more affordable housing.
Belville has, I stand corrected, that Belville has no obligation to put up any affordable housing. It will have an obligation to rehabilitate. That's according to both plans, both sides' experts. So, where will that money come, come from if this ordinance isn't passed, which is, I think, where you're going? Then it will come from the taxpayer, period.
Now, we, years ago, Belville had rehab units counted towards their affordable housing quota, and it was done for people who didn't, couldn't afford it, through the Estes County funds for rehabilitating houses. Several of them I know on Portland Street were done.
That's not what the court is saying now. That's not what the court is saying now, and that's why the three documents were submitted. They have been, they're under scrutiny at the present time, but guess what? The judge designated to hear this application, which I made, for the fee ordinance, he approved it, and he signed an order to that effect. It doesn't mean any other component of the, of the, of the plan is necessitated by the approval of that. But I'll tell you what, and I'll say this to my clients, if it's not passed, it's going to come out of your pocket if there's an obligation to do anything, period.
It's going to be the builders if there's an obligation, we don't have that. But I'm asking you four councilpeople who thankfully showed up tonight, think it this carefully. This town is overdeveloped, we have tons and tons, I mean, go look at Audubon Place, which is now back to Brentwood Gardens, by the way. I don't know if you know, but here's, it might be the same developer. There's tons of Section 8, right up the street, look at the Betsy Ross, tons of Section 8, Sumner and my customers are there. So, we've got tons and tons of affordable housing in Belville. So, this ordinance, I think, is unnecessary, and I'm pleased, want to state on the record again, I believe it's just a way for a builder to have an in, I'm filing a builder's remedy. And again, I wish one of you four would explain why, because there's been nothing but denial by you, by the town attorney, and by Councilmember Bell, in writing in the newspaper that there's no 2,000 units proposed on it, yet it's in the, in the report. So, can I have an answer on that? How did the 2,000 units on the Pickle Side property get in there if there's no intent to build 2,000? Did you lie to the court?
Mayor, there's two parts, let me address the easy part first. Belville, as a result of our pleadings, has temporary immunity from builder's remedy suits. In order to turn that builder's remedy immunity permanent, we, the governing body, has to pass the ordinances that are going to be placed in front of it that have been approved by the Superior Court. If not, then there will be, these are, these are part of Belville's defense mechanism against a builder's remedy suit. Now, there was, when the, when the draft plan was submitted, and this was something that was ongoing, I, I'm going to guess from, from maybe 2013, 2014, I'm certain 2014, the beginning of 2014, a discussion of the development on North Washington Avenue. Eventually, that was reduced to a plan that was submitted to the planning board. You had two choices here in making submissions to the court, pretending that that was not, was not, not only on the, was off the drawing board, it was in front of the planning board, I believe, for two or more hearings, and then it came before the governing body. It's a draft plan, the language is simp, it says "draft" on every single page. I don't know what Belville's final plan is going to be, but that certainly was a good-faith attempt to be in compliance with what the facts were on the table at that time. Should we have said, "Belville has no plans," when we knew darn well they did have that plan in front of them? I don't think so, Mr. Frantantoni.
Last question.
But in any event, that's not the point. The point is, the point is, we have builders... The point is, the point is, we have builder's immunity, and this is a way to continue it, this is part of the continuing process, and we have more work to do.
Should be added, the temporary immunity.
That's correct, like every, like every other township that's involved in this litigation.
What happens if we don't approve this?
Well, then I think we're gonna lose our immunity. And we're gonna lose our ability to, to assess fees in the future. So for example, let's say we have, that the former Roach property, let's say that that, let's say that that process becomes finalized, and they obtain preliminary, say, plan approval, we won't be able to impose fees on that. Period.
They'll pay building fees.
Pardon me?
They'll pay building fees.
They, we will not be able to impose co-fee fees, Belville will be responsible-
Right, well, they'll pay building fees-
For the fees, if, if as you want them to do, they vote this down. It's up to them.
Well, they'll pay building fees, and they'll pay taxes, and high enough taxes, so we will get a lot of money without this affordable thing. So I hope you people really consider what you're doing here, because, you know, the towns with the least increase in ratables had the least increase in property taxes. Can I ask you a question, Mayor? And again, both Belville and my house, when nothing was going on, my taxes never went up. As soon as development, they doubled and tripled. So that just goes on, and it's, I showed you this, this tall ledger report, the losing rates occurred from property taxes. The more ratables, the more your taxes go up because they demand more services. So I hope you stick and push for warehousing, and industry is what is very much in demand there. Please consider what you're doing tonight.
Thank you.
Very dangerous.
Jeff Mattingly, fifty-six, Walnut. I appreciate the submission of the spending fees, and to be able to have that authorized, approved, and in place to be able to charge fees to contractors and builders, developers, who come to the town to do work in our town, that we should be able, like, say, with Clara Moss, that they would replace the line, the sewer line, the water line in the street when they're doing major alterations to the hospital, which didn't happen. So I understand that, but is this draft, as you refer to, that I'm pretty sure that no one has read, maybe not even the council fully, and understand what this draft, that is codiciled to this spending plan, is going before an Essex County Superior Court judge for review and potential approval?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, but it's part of the submission.
That has nothing to do with what we're doing tonight.
No, I understand that, but it has everything to do with what we're doing tonight, because that enables this to become the aspect of which the builder's remedy can be imposed upon Belville. If you submit plans in the round-three proposal, that you're proposing a future development, and you're naming properties, namely two thousand units on the Kitty and others, Cortlandt Street, you tone that down to fifty units, that's a polluted industrial piece of property. So we're looking at properties like that, including BG/BV zones, as well as the entire length of Washington Avenue, to potentially include zoning in this submission from this township, which you have, you know, sworn to, as well as Darlene Green, that this is true and honest and complete. Well, when you lay down that type of tract, what if, say, Capadaglie comes along and says, "Well, you say you're putting two thousand units on the Kitty property," and we just saw a letter a week ago tonight that shows that there is interest in the Kitty's and mixed use, as you put it, which would include that residential, by other developers on that property. So what you're doing is, in effect, you're asking for a judge to approve this, at which point, with that and the other things, then you can be held to it. You can be held to your own words, and so this future plan then can be used by a builder to hold you to it.
Well, first of all, I disagree with you. The draft can never be, the draft, I'm not gonna go into the whole discussion again, but while you're holding that in your hand, I'm sure you read page twenty-five, where the developer, where the expert concludes that Belville's obligation is probably going to be limited to rehabilitation because it's a fully-developed town.
So why put it in there, Counselor?
Fully-developed town.
Why, why put it in there? Why, why change zoning industrial commercial, which pays ratables that don't cost us money, actual tax relief, and start including residential aspects in those zones, in a flood zone, up against highly sensitive infrastructure, the power grid, high-pressure gas underneath, a flood zone? This is no place to earmark a piece of property for development residentially? That's insane! And yet, it's in your submission that you call a draft, but if a judge says, "Well, you know, I don't have a problem with it," okay, well, now it's on paper.
Well, if the draft, if the draft happens to change, and I don't know whether or not it will, I really have no idea, but things often change. In any event, the contents of that draft were addressed by the governing body and the planning board in public hearings-
Not with us, not with us, no.
A number of times, and the governing, the governing body took action on that. Now, there might be another plan, and, and I, you know, you're talking about the Finkelstein property, so I'm gonna ask my clients not to discuss that property in particular, that is, that's, that's somewhat, that's, that's up to them, I, you know, I don't know, it's a-
The valley is not the place, which is why it was abandoned for residential housing.
Yeah, but you can't tell them that, that's between, uh-
Well, no, you're gonna change, you're gonna change zoning.
The market will determine that. We can't tell them what to do.
Okay, and then a judge approves this, and I come to you as a developer, and I say, "I'm gonna sue you under builder's remedy if you don't let the Finkelsteins and I do what we wanna do that you put on paper."
Well, we'll see what the final plan says. We'll see what the, we'll have to see what the final plan says.
I don't understand why it's in there at all, that's the intention.
Because at the time, the documents were drafted and submitted, that was in front of the governing body and the planning board.
Why don't you amend them, then?
Pardon me?
Why isn't it amended, then, to remove residential from flood zones, former industrial properties-
It's not necessary to amend it at this time.
Never be done.
It's not necessary to amend it at this time. What's necessary-
It is to us.
Is for this ordinance to be acted upon by the governing body.
Well, I appreciate that, but this ordinance is the final component, component necessary-
No, it's the first component.
For a final judicial review.
No, it's the first component. It's already been judicially approved. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how many different ways I can say it. The Supreme Court said, "This is what we are, we are, this is what we are mandating you to do."
Mr. Murphy.
And so we present them with an ordinance, a special master reviews it, the judge reviewed it, and the judge entered the order.
This was your first submission to the state.
Now, this is now in its final stage, this ordinance right here is in a final stage.
Mr. Murphy, I appreciate it, I, I understand the ordinance, this is the point, and quite frankly, your willingness to fulfill an obligation where there is none is obviously an attempt, a deliberate attempt, to create that dichotomy, to create that liability, where people will boomerang back on you, and you will be at the mercy of the builder's remedy, "Well, what can we do?" You know, "Well, you know what, you have no obligation, you're a fully-developed town, your infrastructure is maxed out and antiquated, you, we really are in terrible managerial shape, if you ask me." And the reach is to create more liability, not to, not to bring up to speed where we're lacking all over the place, but to now make matters worse, there's no mass transit there, there's a piece of environmentally dangerous property to put housing on, in fact, the valley where it floods. What are you gonna do with five thousand people in there when the road's flooded out in four days?
Well, I'm not gonna comment on that.
Well, I understand, you don't want to, but that's our concern.
But apparently, apparently, what occurred there between the, excuse me, the proposed developer, the owner of the property, not only on the top of Washington Avenue, but on the bottom, they apparently had, were hoping to come to some kind of an accommodation, and they presented it to the planning board, and it didn't fly. It, it, actually, it did there, and it came here, and it was voted down.
Well, you, you, you point to the fact, March, March of twenty sixteen, the papers were submitted, and the, there was no opposition. People don't know what you're doing, you haven't supplied the public with information. We had a meeting earlier, in, what was it, three, four months ago, and no information was provided. But thirty-one developers, lawyers, and interested parties were CC'd, but everything was done in private session, and we were disenfranchised. We asked, "Why can't we at least listen? We don't necessarily have to participate, can we understand what our government is doing?"
I don't know why you're saying that, or actually, how you can say it. The ordinance had its first reading on March twenty-second, it's been out there since then, and tonight is the, is the hearing.
Not this.
That's not on, that's not on tonight.
You wanna go to the money, I wanna go to the meat. You know, where you should have been applying for an exemption, you went to round-three and created a forward-looking liability in that draft.
We did exactly what the Supreme Court told us to do.
No, there was, there was a feedback on the song record that basically was asking what you're doing. So, I mean, what are you trying to accomplish here, when you have, you don't, you potentially have no liability, you, you're offered help from Morris Town and the facility that the state runs to aid municipalities, "No, thank you, can you just please just, you know, okay this, and we'll be on our way, we don't need anybody anymore," and that was the feedback.
No, no, the process will be just the same as it is now. What I anticipate, I'll say it again, is a spending plan ordinance that will be introduced and discussed, such as is occurring this evening.
Which is the final portion, you get an approval.
And then the final part would be Belville's plan.
Well, Belville's plan includes twenty-five-hundred, and we all know from going to planning board meetings, that, you know, what do you wanna have approved? You know, lunacy sky towers that, you know, scrape the clouds, or something so incredibly dense along the ground that there's no grass anywhere?
I don't know what the owner of the property is going to do, and I don't know if he's negotiating with anybody to do these things.
It's planned retail, and it has industrial grandfathered in, does it not? Is that the present zoning that we deliberately created for planned retail, that would save us huge amounts of money in ratables if we could get businesses in there?
Well, you know, you, you, look, in a perfect world-
So to have a residential component, but we're making-
Talking about businesses coming in there, but in, in the real world, how long has that property been, been basically vacant?
Well, in the real world, it's being cleaned for thirty years.
Thirty or forty years.
It was supposed to be-
We instituted litigation to encourage them to clean it up, Mr. Mattingly, you know that.
They did.
Okay.
They paid it.
Okay, so now, you know, we're taking-
And the taxes, five hundred, a thousand a year.
We're taking the appropriate steps to first clean up the land, but you know, you're-
First, you, you didn't clean anything, they cleaned it.
No, we didn't, no, they were required to.
They had no choice to sell their land but to clean it. I mean, that was the reality of it, and quite frankly, Belville has not been a very good partner in helping them market their land. Now their land is in the final stages.
I had senators in here.
You have, you have no idea what you're talking about, what you're making of state.
You declared eminent domain on that property, and you threatened it with, you certainly did.
Maybe we should have, but I'll tell you, when I first was elected, we had Senator Rice in here, and every other senator along with Walmart, and a couple others, and they kept jacking the price up on it. That's the bottom line, Mr. Fran Tantoni, I mean, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, that's a compliment.
You know, the eminent domain was a non-condemnation, was a non-condemnation.
Five million, like it's-
November twenty fifteen, you looked at condemn it once, it was ninety-nine percent clean, and now we, what is the master plan for high-density residential development on, on a property that's totally not suited for it in any way, shape, or form, for any number of reasons? And so, you know, where you can, you could have applied for an exemption, and you could have, without forward creating this liability, there would have been no reason for round-three. You simply could have changed the zoning as you wished on the avenue, and if you liked, you know, transit village around Silver Lake with the light rail, which it's appropriate for. Down here, it's nowhere, it's locked on, on two sides, three sides when it floods, and housing and businesses along the entire length of the one long side that isn't power lines, with eight-foot cyclone-
I don't know how they're marketing it, I, I know there was a-
You're enabling them to market as residential. Your plan is to go alter the master plan when this is approved.
I'll give you an example, I'll give you an example. First of all, from what I'm reading, and this is purely an opinion, the days of the big-box store are rapidly declining. Big stores, big, big-box stores are having difficulty surviving now.
In northern New Jersey?
Big, big-box stores are, like Sports Authority or Costco, they're having a very difficult time in this retail environment. I'll, you know, we're having a good discussion here, but, but I'll tell you what happened, are you familiar with the Monmouth Mall?
No.
Okay, the Monmouth Mall is, was built, I don't know how many years ago, it seems to me like, it's always been there, it's on Route thirty-five or Route thirty-six, it's off of exit one oh five on the Parkway, a gigantic mall, beautiful stores, like Lord Taylor, Barnes &amp; Noble, movies, the whole nine yards. So a group came in called the Kushner Group, called the Kushner Group.
It isn't.
And they had a five-hundred-million-dollar investment to make in that complex, they wanted to put up, I think, a boutique hotel, they wanted to change some things around, there might have even been a residential component to it. But there was a, a persistent group of activists that created a climate for them that made it more and more difficult for them to operate. So I think at the last meeting of the governing body, and this is a matter of record, the representative from Kushner approached, much as you are here, the governing body, and said, "You know what, we're gonna take our five-hundred-million and put it someplace else, it's just too much trouble here." And they did that. And it, it, it put the town, I believe it's Eaton Town, I believe it's gonna put Eaton Town in a difficult spot. So this governing body, I think, has done just about everything it can to create a good climate for, for new businesses, at least that's the way it seems to me, and for builders, because if you just simply, for example, go off Franklin Avenue, St. Barnabas, there's a lot of hospitals being closed, Columbus Hospital closed, Irvington General, a lot of hospitals being closed, but they selected Clara Moss as a good spot to build a massive addition, okay? The former Roach property, well, the governing body is getting close in negotiations with the new owner of that property. Then you see the senior citizens, the, uh, uh, project right next to the senior citizens, it's a beautiful project. You go up further, you can see the geriatric hospital, fifty years.
Hold on, I gotta stop.
You wanna find-
We need to call him back here.
I get the fees, that really works, I understand. People have to give something to Belville and our antiquated infrastructure to do large-scale development. The idea that the, the hospital behind it almost got developed residentially a few years ago, that was what every builder wants that comes to town, high-density residential. Can we get the office parks here, we're behind a massive medical center with so few hospitals left in the area. Services, no, I envisioned three hundred and fifty homes, you know, so this is all they wanna build because that's what they make money on. And this is going to make that possible, inside that fair share housing plan, the housing element, two hundred plate papers.
Talk to the council, not to the audience.
Well, I'm just saying, they don't know, he talks about why, nobody complained, because they don't know what it's about. It's a very complex document and process, and we haven't been imparted information. In fact, we've been circumvented from the entire process. And now here we are at the final phase of the spending portion, to, "Okay, well, a judge is gonna look at it, and it's gonna go from draft to law, and we're gonna be liable for it." And they'll be loading up the properties down there in the, in the valley with residential that's gonna require more services. We are drowning from the cost of services. We don't have any money for anything anymore because of salaries, payroll, taxes, pension, the, all of the fees and everything that go into, the budget for running the town has shrunk to near nothing. So it's a quick fix, you get some fast money, and on the back end, Belville's dead, and we're at city stats, because twenty-five-hundred new units means five thousand at least new people, you're at thirty-six now, you jumped the line to forty, you're looking at transit village money, those are, those are funding vehicles for cities, not for towns, to urbanize, they go up. They don't, they don't, they don't go out anymore, there's nowhere left to go out, by the report's own admission. And also, by the report's own admission, we are fully developed. And so this is going to places where, you know, advice- And so, this is going to places where, you know, advice from the state tells you under the Boxer Report not to go there for residential. Do not convert former industrial properties, sensitive areas, flood zones, infrastructure. This is national power grid, high-pressure gas. They just expanded the electricity there over the last two years, those gigantic poles going up and down all of our streets now. You know, we don't want to be a city. You know, we want to remain a town, but this is taking us in the city direction. And we're not there. We don't have Midtown Direct. We got the camp and buses over here, and it takes four or five lights to get over that bridge in the morning. And these people are isolated. There's going to be cars. This is a car-bus-oriented development in the north end of the town. So, we just don't have the infrastructure for it. You know, let's not even talk about water and sewer and all those problems that we have. So, I mean, please, go back and amend this, this, and take those environmentally sensitive, even dangerous places to develop out of it and stop the, remove it. Go back for the exemption, Tom, excuse me.
Counselor Murphy.
Counselor Murphy. Go for the exemption through the chair.
Put the draft away and let's talk about...
Well, nobody wants to look at it, but that's the point.
Okay. I mean, how many times are you going to...
Well, because people just aren't hearing it, and they don't know what it is, and you're about to do it, and you know what it is. And you know what it means down the road. And so, when we get there and it happens, it's going to be, well, oh, well.
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak? Chair.
I have... Mr. Chairman, I caution you that if you're going to be addressing any part of development, you may wish to rethink that in your position as chairman of the zoning board.
I'm asking a general question, nothing specific.
Oh, man.
I'm a very general question. The night they had the special meeting here for this, was that the ordinance that was introduced or not?
This ordinance? The fee ordinance?
Yeah.
Nothing else?
Just the fee ordinance. The other twos weren't introduced?
No, the other two components are not.
Second question.
It's for another day.
Second question. How, when the fees are collected and put into this trust fund, how will it be utilized? The money.
Say again.
You put the money into this trust fund, how will it be utilized?
Well, that's going to be the subject of another ordinance. And I believe it's going to be used to rehabilitate between 100 and 760, so, existing units within the township. Now, the money could also be utilized for other purposes, escrows for projects, or, let's say, someday in the future, Belville, I think Mr. Frank Tantoni proposed a few meetings ago, a housing authority. That money could be used, you know, to create a housing authority. I don't know. I'm not going to speculate on how that money's going to be used.
What you say is, there's nothing in the ordinance to say we're...
What I do know is that will be subject to court approval.
Okay, so, right now, there's nothing in the ordinance to say how it will be utilized.
No, nothing at all.
Okay. The third question I have. In the event a person buys a foreclosure, house is empty, and he either decides to change it from a one to a two, or knock the building down and make it two, that there's a one there now, will this apply?
I believe that if the buyer chooses to knock it down, it would apply.
Ah, now, my last question...
Okay, but if it occurs the result of a disaster, it won't.
Okay. Oh, no, I'm not talking about a disaster. I'm just talking about it's closed. That's it. No burnt or anything.
There's a provision that covers that in the ordinance?
Yeah, I believe you said if it's burnt and he's rebuilding, it's exempt.
Correct.
That's what you said before?
Say again?
If the building's burnt.
Yeah, yes. The fees won't apply.
Right, okay. Now, my last question, this is, and you're right, I shouldn't be asking, but I have to ask this question for example choice, is if this is approved tonight, will it affect any case that comes before the zoning board on Thursday?
Well, hopefully, what happens, if the governing body approves this tonight, it'll be published. It'll be published prior to July 1st. Anybody that has preliminary site plan approval will be exempt from this.
Okay.
If they already have it.
Well, well, basically...
Or if they have it on Thursday, that's my point.
No, it would take 20 days to take effect.
Okay, that's a good answer. And now, my last question.
You said that.
I thought that was your last...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But I'm being very facetious. I'm only talking about the ordinance, nothing else. My last question is this. By passing this ordinance, would it have any imposition on either board to force it to vote yes or no on an application?
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't impact.
Okay.
It doesn't impact the board.
Okay.
Boards are second sovereign authorities.
So, they could still vote yes or no depending upon the way they want to vote?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the use of funds is in this ordinance tonight. That's not the correct answer you gave, Mr. Bell Gersio. It's item 8A. The expenditure of use of funds is in this ordinance tonight.
Okay, Ben. Luke. Yeah, Luke Palanti, Lebanon Law Court. And I apologize, because I don't know the whole ins and outs of this, and I didn't really have much information either, but if I understand what Mr. Murphy just said, if I buy a house in Belville and I want to invest in this town and knock it down and build another one, I'm going to be assessed a fee. Is that right?
Yes, if you knock it down.
If I knock it down, I'm going to be assessed a fee. If the house is totally inhabitable, whatever, and I want to invest, keep investing in this town that I grew up in, I'm going to get hit with a fee, which, is that right?
Say that again, Luke.
If I knock a house down, I want to put a note up.
If he wants to knock a house down and build another one, he's going to be...
It's going to be imposed.
So, lifelong residents, if they want to invest in their town, they're going to pay additional fees and taxes and everything else. So, that's one thing. If I understand you, all these connections are mutually exclusive of one another?
How do you mean that?
In other words, this ordinance doesn't affect that?
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yeah.
So, you vote on this ordinance, it doesn't affect this draft?
They're related, but they are related, but they are tri-mutually exclusive. The next step will be to submit to the court a spending plan, a proposed spending plan. This just enables the town to collect money. I don't anticipate the spending plan being approved. I'm just thinking, it probably would have to be introduced sometime in July or August, and it would go to the court, and then the court would have to take a look at it. This has been in front of the court since December, so...
We know this is a process, and it's obviously a very sensitive process to everyone. My only comment would be, every one of us that ran for office, we ran on the fact that we're for responsible redevelopment, okay? Every one of us that ran, myself included, there's four people up there voting on something that's that major to this town, this people feel like. I think you should table this, you've got seven people. Every one of them should be voting for this. Sorry, I just don't think it's responsible, especially to people who just ran, got elected, on the fact that I'm for responsible redevelopment. They're sitting out tonight, why? Seven people should be voting on any business having to do with any redevelopment, ordinances like this. That's the responsible way to do it. So, I urge you, table this until you have a full board up there.
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak?
I have one question. Was in a proposal for 207. Our weather border up. It's two sign are missing, one on Columbus 7, all street low.
This is just not, no, no, look, no, no. This is just not in the ordinance. Later you can speak about that.
It's another sign missing over here at Belville Avenue. And I said they want to put it on, and then everything.
After while, you can speak on this. This is only not in the ordinance, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Post the post.
So, pretty much a motion of the post-up period.
Councilmember Cosavelli. Wonga.
Yes.
N'tori.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
Yes.
Number one, for second by reading an affordable housing ordinance for the town of Belville.
They move.
Sad.
Court pull over.
Councilmember Cosavelli.
Yes.
Wonga.
Yes.
N'tori.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
Yes.
Orders on the floor.
Motion going to public participation.
So, votes.
Second.
Court pull over.
Councilmember Cosavelli.
Yes.
Wonga.
Yes.
N'tori.
Yes.
Anyone who wants to speak on public participation? You can talk now.
Now I can limit you.
Okay. Recently, this overdevelopment of our already over-dissolved town, how it's hurt people. But these apartments, condos, housing, rental units, I've been saying it's a bubble and it's coming to an end. And now, the professionals are saying it. The new survey of New Jersey bankers shows that a significant share of bankers strongly agree that the multifamily real estate market is now a bubble. And because I'm saying exactly what I've been predicting years, these builders were building all these apartments because the banks wouldn't loan money. I had to sell a house four years ago and reduce the price on it because the eight people who signed contracts couldn't get mortgages. Once banks start loosening up on mortgages, the average young family, once they start having kids, don't want to live in a high-rise. They want a yard. They want some grass. They want a little pool for their kid to wait in and all that. It's now, the experts are now saying, there's a bubble. So, Mr. Mayor, you said, what about Bluefield and Montclair with all developments? My son now, one of my sons, both live in Bluefield, put the tax up. There's over $11,000 in taxes, weren't there $8,000? He can't, he's a young kid. He can't afford it, you know? And it's happening all over. So, this is what we're asking here. Stop this residential, especially this high-density, and the courtland and street project. That developer came right here. Mr. Murphy don't seem to recall it. Right here in public notes, it's on the record, he wants to build 154 units. He asked you for a pilot. He said he wants a pilot, and the reason he said he wants a pilot, because the bank didn't give him money if it gets a pilot. Well, the banks, whose business is to loan money for viable projects, if they want to give them money, why are we giving our taxpayers money, which is what a pilot is? And he asked specifically, $100,000 for 30 years, 150 years, that comes to $662...
There's no way he's getting a pilot for 30 years.
Well, and thank you, but you see, that's what these builders want. And that's, and we ask you elected officials, stop it, stop it. And to reply, well, you don't have to reply on the ordinance, but now on the public participation, the towns that have the least, I get a bought house in Pennsylvania, $313,000, taxes for a year. For 12, 13 years, nothing happened up there. No building went on, and my taxes went up to $400. And then, the 80s, the boom came, you know, 90s, and they stopped building, and from 300 went to 3400. So, 10 times of what they were. Now, they stopped the last couple of years because the development has stopped up there. So, same thing in Belville. My first 15 years in Belville, my taxes hardly went up. I would get a $5 increase, $20 increase. Once all the development started, that Angelo Veneziano used to call them the condom developments, right? Our taxes went through the roof, and they're going up. So, I'm asking you, these builders got to be told no. The door for their overly dense housing units is closed. And in your report, in your home report, you're talking about increasing the density and wanting to double it to 24 units per acre. That's what we fought in the 80s to bring down to 25 per acre, because at that time, the planning board and everybody, when we did our master plan, what we were all saying would be coming in inner city. So, we reduced it to 16, and then we reduced it to 12 per acre. Please, don't go back to what was killing this town. So, I'll keep my comments just to that subject. I beg you. And, you know, 2006, I supported you, Mr. Mayor, and you thanked me for helping you. I'm asking you now to help the people of Belville, not the developers.
That's all I've ever tried to do.
Represent the people of Belville. And, you know, because we see, look in campaign contributor reports, all in our development, urban redevelopment, big contributor, Councilman LaTary funds. So, we say, who's the interest? I didn't contribute to his fund. Is he going to take care of the developer or me? So, please, you're elected, hopefully, to represent the people of Belville. Please do so, and do not increase the density in any part of our town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Or Mr. Frisbee, I don't know, whatever you want.
It's getting tough to toe surprise. We were in compliance with COA in 2008 according to the draft copy, and we had an obligation to update our information now with the courts, going into the courts. But we could have applied for an exemption based on the fact that we are an urban-aid community as designated by the state, meaning that we already have such a large degree of low-income housing in Belville residents that the state pays one-third of our municipal and district taxes roughly, one-third. So, while other towns have stopped, pretty much all together, seeking to comply with the fair share housing rules because it's stuck in Trenton, and the requirements have been so far, everybody's saying, come on legislators, let's, you know, iron this out. Let's show us where, you know, the hard edges are for compliance and what we have to do. So, in the meantime, everybody's stopped. But Belville seems to be in a big rush to comply with something that no one else is rushing to comply with any longer, and no enforcement is stated in the plan. There will be no enforcement against Belville. So, then it looks as though the only reason for this, logically, is to push the third round plan, looking forward to the expansion down the road. But you're designated, you've designated properties primarily that are, some are in motion and good plan, SoHo Hospital, all for it, you know, wonderful, wonderful use. And now, if we're going industrial, commercial, or commercial behind the hospital, it's a medical center, expanding, perfect place for it. May attract professionals to come live in those apartments, you know, young professionals seeking to work in the expanded hospital, in the SoHo hospital. And that's wonderful. That's smart planning. That's the right way to go. To be able to extract from that with an authority is the right thing to do when used judicially and practiced properly for the benefit of the town, to renew our infrastructure at the developer's cost. Makes perfect sense to me. But then you try to shoehorn residential into the valley, which has no application, has historically been abandoned for that reason. It's not the proper place for housing, those that are grandfathered in, that haven't been flooded out or burned out or destroyed. It works and should not be messed with. These are old neighborhoods. I saw that go down when Melham was here, when eminent domain was cleared on 100 acres of the northeast corner of the town. And it was really a pitiful sight to watch and happen, and thank God it never happened. But it was another attempt, a prior, more aged attempt. And now, here we are, come around again, and the focus is on it again, but this time now, we, you know, 50-story buildings or 20-story buildings or buildings at all are misplaced in that area of town. 24 units an acre should not be in the plan. And what you would want to see is the development on the avenue where there's buses, infrastructure, where people would want to live for services and not need a car. Where are you going to go on the Finkelstein property without a car? So, the idea is, why are we rushing to comply with something where no one else that I know of is, has gone that route in years now, as this got hung in the courts? So, it's got to be all about that, and that's a very worrisome thing for the public. And there's no reason why it should be in there, and it will necessitate zoning changes because you're planning residential where there is none grandfathered in or historically there. It's commercial, industrial, as it should be. It represents tax relief, not taxes, not more and higher taxes. We're there. There's nowhere to go. You've got, you know, people are dropping out and leaving all over town. We're losing our town. Let's not do this. That will only make matters worse. Please don't do this. Take that out. Do what's right by the township. Take that out, do what's right by the township, that you profess to love. You know, that you care about more than anything, don't go here. We don't want to be a city. 36,000 is in and around where we've been since 1960. There was a little burp in there, slightly below or above, got as high as 37 shortly. 37.6, I think it was, back down to 35, 36,000, which the town can handle, which we have an overhead now that's killing this board. So let's not go, let's not make that worse. Residential increases taxes. There's no doubt about it, it's proven. It's not like I'm pulling it out of my ear. I can show you plenty of documentation of it. It's going to increase taxes on the back end hugely. That's what we're suffering under now. So please don't do this. Please remove that third phase, that round three forward-looking development that includes properties that simply have no place with residential, no place whatsoever. That'll make matters worse. Please don't do this.
Thank you, Chair. Do you have anyone else who speaks?
Ms. Capola, you want to make your point about your son?
Yes, my point is, the sign all the way down to Columbus seven, Mr. Burke, she sold out. And she promised me that she was going to fix everything over there. It has not been fixed. And a lot of people, they asked me, all this is Columbus seven or one. They asked the postman also. And what they do, over here, Washington even at Belleville Avenue, people get lost.
You say the street signs?
Yeah, the sign, yes.
Okay, it's missing.
Yeah, both of them are missing. I mean, you know, how many times I got to come over here, you know, and then, you know, bring it up and bring it up? I mean, we work hard, you guys back there again, congratulations again, we worked very hard. We were behind you 100%. Now, like you say, one hand wash the other.
They will be taken care of.
Okay? And please, again, like the gentleman says, please break it up, break down the stacks. And Columbus seven, three, four floors went by already. People losing a house, tenants are, get the hell out, that's staying, they can't take them. They're losing jobs. You taught us where it was supposed to go. We can't go to two kind of houses or nursery home, it's even worse over there. Our income is very low. We cannot afford to leave anymore. What are we going to do, hang ourselves? I hope you're going to reconsider that and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Coswell.
Yes.
Longo.
Yes.
Nifari.
Yes.
I just want to maybe take two minutes real quick and our attorney could help me out a little bit here. I just want to explain this a little bit simpler terms, maybe not everyone understood it completely. Basically, all this did tonight was set up a mechanism that we could collect fees from developers. And what it does is on high-density residential units, it makes that fee 6%. So that actually discourages high-density residential, in my opinion.
I agree.
Right, is that correct?
6%.
As opposed to 1.5%. Right. So, in my opinion, I think that discourages high-density residential development. And what we're trying to do here is to be proactive instead of reactive. I understand that the other towns in Essa County haven't done any of these steps, but it's either you're going to be proactive or reactive. They're banking on being reactive. We're trying to do the proactive thing here.
They were proactive a while ago.
We continue to be proactive.
Reading adjourned.